I call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shonur.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Here.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow public comments on resolutions only. Our Board Regulations 0167 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address any other, any board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please remember to state your name and municipality of residence and group affiliation if applicable each and every time you address the board. The meeting is open to public for comment on items on the agenda. Now, we had one person sign up for this first hearing of the citizens, and I just want to make sure that the person signed up for the first part, not the second part. So it's Ms. Kathleen Hall. You didn't. Okay. Did you want to talk later? Like, at the second part? You don't want to talk at all? Okay, so I'm just going to get rid of this, then. Okay, no problem. It's all good. All right. Okay, well, I close out the portion of the meeting. Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing? Good. Right? We're happy to be back. We're in person again. That's fantastic.
Yep.
Right? Committee reports. Anybody do anything? Hear anything? Say anything?
No.
No. It's been quiet the past...
Well, actually, Mr. Shonur, you and I attended our first Finance Committee meeting together.
I'm going to steal your thunder. Or is the super going to talk about that? Because every time we talk about stuff, we steal the super's thunder.
All right. Well, we've kicked off budget season, which, I guess officially kicked off a little while ago, but our part of it kicks off now, where we have a series of Finance Committee meetings. Mr. Shonur and I are on the Finance Committee, and we meet with Mr. Grosso and Mr. DeVita, and we talk about the budget and try to figure out how we're going to keep moving forward with the little money that we get, so, without raising people's taxes. So, in the next few weeks, you'll start to see board presentations by the various stakeholders talking about their portions of the budget. So, stay tuned. But same as it's always been, it's very difficult to try to stay within a 2% cap when everything is a lot more expensive than it was the previous year. Anyway, I also attended an EDAC meeting today, but I'm not going to steal the superintendent's thunder, and I will let him speak about that later on today. And that's that. So, we have a board presentation this evening. It's a presentation of comprehensive annual financial report for the 1920 school year. And we have Mr. Paul Lurch, who's here. Good evening. How are you?
How are you?
Fantastic. Welcome back.
Yes, nice to be here. Been used to these Zoom meetings, so this is, this is going back to the old way, which is nice. Nice, very nice. So, I'm here to discuss the results of the audit for June 30, 2020, for the Cedar Grove Public Schools. Let me start off by saying that, that the Board of Education received unmodified opinions in all three that we issued. An unmodified opinion is the opinion that everybody is striving for, meaning there are no exceptions or issues with those audited opinions. We have an opinion on the financial statements themselves, which is the overarching financial statements as presented. We have an opinion on a single audit on internal controls and compliance in accordance with governmental auditing standards. And then we also have specific single audit opinion, and that is on major programs on internal controls and compliance. The Board of Education was subject to a single audit, and that is determined by the Single Audit Act of 1984 and Uniform Guidance. What that simply means is that if the Board of Education receives either federal or state expenditures, revenue and expenditures, that exceeds $750,000 in a single year, it triggers additional auditing requirements of compliance. The federal amount that was expended was $516,000, so we didn't trigger a federal single audit. But on the state side, as in most districts in the state of New Jersey, I actually have not seen any that have not triggered a state single audit, only because what's happening is, is that with the way the state is actually paying some of the pension numbers, they're paying it on behalf of the Board of Education, so they make us, and they make the Board of Education record that as a revenue and expense, and it becomes subject to the Single Audit Act. So, we actually received and expended $6.4 million in state aid. About half of that was on behalf payments that the state makes on behalf of Cedar Grove Board of Education towards the pension contributions for its public employees who retired, as well as active in the PERS and TPAF system. And what really what that means is that, once we trigger a state single audit or, or single audit, we have to go back and look at specific grant compliance items for the major programs. A major program is any program that we receive money more, that exceeds the $750,000 is considered a major program. And then we go back and we do explicit compliance testing on the expenditures, whether allowable, unallowable, those type of items in the grants. So, having said all of that, and we've done an extensive amount of testing on the financial statements, governmental auditing standards, and the single audit requirements for these major programs, we have no significant deficiencies on the internal controls noted during the audit. So again, good news, and I think that's just a crazy way or fancier way of saying, you know what, job well done. So, that's terrific to see. We're in the third year of the OPEB reporting, and that is really the reporting for the post-employment benefits other than pensions, just another crazy way of saying health benefit costs. So, we're the third year into it. We're really late in the season, and we are here now at the end of February, and, and you know, we're seven months beyond the end of the school year. Normally, we're presenting, we could present anywhere from October, September, all the way through to December, perhaps January. But we're here so late, two things. One, same thing that affected your lives has affected our lives, and that's COVID. And so, we've had nothing but delays on top of delays. And then because of the OPEB reporting requirements, where we have to report the financial activity that the state pays on behalf of the retired individuals through the system for the health benefit component, that's outsourced by the state of New Jersey to another accounting firm. This is the third year we have the reporting. It's the third year they've been deficient or delinquent in meeting the deadlines. So, we've, we've had, we've had this presented to us in, in January, February, and December over the last three years. So, let's hope for a better year next year, that we can at least be here timely. And it's not that critical for you, you know, as a board member, and I only say that because we really only have one audit comment. You know, if we, we sometimes present in Board of Education's where we could have 20 audit comments. And so, if I was sitting here today with you on, on February 23rd, trying to discuss 20 or so audit comments, and then by the time they get implemented, the school year is almost over, and we were coming up against the end of the school year already. So, for you, it's not as critical from the audit comment perspective. I want to talk a little bit about equity and where we ended the school year. So, I don't know if there was a synopsis out. If not, it's no big deal. For those board members that have the report, I'm just going to go ahead and look at page 75, if you want to follow along. So, page 75 is the general fund schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. It's really the budget, and this is the key document in this audit report. And it's the budget from the perspective of revenues and expenditures. It shows the original budget, any modifications, and it also shows actually what we collected in revenue and what did we disburse as part of expenditures. So, it gives the entire financial picture. If I look at the page 75 on the bottom corner, under the actual column, we can see that the board ended the fiscal year, the 12-month cycle ending on June 30, 2020, with a positive $849,916 more than the year before, for a grand total of fund balance of $5,437,133. And really, what is that made up of? So, I'm going to work my way from the bottom of that schedule up and go through the progression, because that's exactly how we do it internally. So, if I look at the grand total of $5,437,133, the first item coming up is the unassigned balance of $706,000, $707,000. That's your free balance. That's the unassigned balance. That's your maximum permitted balance. It's, the general rule is we take the expenditures, we multiply that by 2%, that's the state statute, the law, maximum permitted. There are certain adjustments that we make on that dollar value, but for all intensive purposes, it's roughly 2%, $706,000. There is pending legislation that was introduced, I looked at it about a week ago, to extend the 2% limitation up to 4%. And that would be for the upcoming school year, but I haven't seen any action on that particular legislation. So, I, I know the bills were introduced. We could actually use it this year, not going forward. I don't know why they didn't enact that and help us through the COVID period, but that would have been, that would have been helpful. Needless to say, that did not happen. So, we're, we're limited to the 2%, which is 706. And then under the assigned balances, we have assigned for subsequent year expenditures, just another way of saying that we're utilizing that money to balance our budget as a revenue in the year we're in. So, we're in the middle of 2021 school year. We're utilizing that $200,000 as a revenue line item. And then we come up to year-end incumbences of $275,000. Incumbrances are nothing more than a reservation of equity for goods and services that have been ordered but yet, yet not delivered or performed. A prime example would be the contract with our auditing firm, Lurch, Vincent Higgins. The board enacted a contract with us to perform the audit, but of course, the audit wasn't performed for June 30, 2020 until after the year end. We were not doing the audit before the year end occurred, and that's why it's a reservation of equity. And then we come up into the restricted components. We have basically two, three types of restricted components. The first one is capital reserve. Capital reserve is very common in most school districts, and it really is the amount of money that we're able to set aside specifically for capital improvements in the district. We have a balance now of $2 million, just over $2,530,000. That's up from last year's $1.3 million. And that was really just nothing more than an appropriation of unexpended monies at the end of the year. The board has, has the option and the ability to do that in June of each year, and if there's unexpended monies in the budget cycle, they can direct those, those proceeds into the various reserves. The most common reserve is capital reserve. So, that is, that is a healthy reserve of $2 million. There was a time where we utilized every single dollar of it, and so we did have a bit of a capital reserve building, as most schools did, and then we ran to the asbestos issue on, on a renovation, and the only way that project got completed was because there was actual capital reserve sitting here and able to complete that project. So, that number almost went down to zero. I don't remember what the actual number was. It was very close, though. So, these are the kind of things that these monies are set up for, and we were very fortunate to have it at that point. And then we come up into the maintenance reserve. Maintenance reserves are money set aside again by the direction of the Board of Education to maintain facilities, not to build or construct, but now to maintain. The maintenance reserves started out at almost the same number, $552,000. We added roughly $300,000. Part of it was by board resolution once again, and then we utilized it through the budget process of another 280-some-odd thousand. So, we went from a total of $552 to a current-year balance of $584,000. Of that $584, $200,000 is currently being utilized in the current year of 2021 to maintain the facility. Maximum number there is $1.9 million. Then the last two items we have is the excess surplus. So, we go through this progression. We know what the maximum amount that we can retain in assigned. We know what we have in these maintenance and capital reserves, and then if there's anything left over, it goes into an excess surplus. So, when I delivered the report last year, we had an excess surplus of $811,000. This year, you have an excess surplus of $807,000. And that's not by a haphazard result. It's by design. It's going through discussions with the business administrator, going through the resolutions by the Board of Education, and determining what that excess number is, to try to avoid any severe fluctuations in the budgeting process. That covers the equity side. If anybody has any questions on that? Okay. So, we'll talk about the comment. I have one comment in the report, and that's in the management report. So, we have the management report on the administrative findings on financial compliance and performance. A lot of, a lot of auditing, a lot of time goes into the, the process, many hours. We only came up with one comment, and really, it pertains to the same comment that we had last year, and it deals with the food service. So, as part of that, we, we go in and we look at the high school activity on the collections of, of revenues towards the food service program, the lunch program. And what we do is, we want to test those revenues and collections, and we want to make sure that what's physically being collected is actually being deposited and credited to your, to your account on a daily basis. We went in to do that this year. We were unable to do that. Some of the information was not available for audit. We, we've had some issues over that over the past couple of years. One of our suggestions was to put a point-of-sale system in. I know we've discussed about that, and it's always about dollars when it comes down to those, those type of decisions. So, excellent report. I think everybody should feel very comfortable. I know the board should feel very comfortable that, you know, you are run very well, great financial shape. I think you're set up for the future. So, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for, for the report. I appreciate hearing it, and I appreciate hearing that we're in great financial shape. And I want to thank Mr. DeVita, who's our, our BA, who really does a great job and, and make sure that the, the results of the audit are as clean as they are. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Here, here.
Yes, truly, really want to thank Mr. DeVita. We, having been on the Budget Committee and knowing what he does and how he makes everything work, and also, he's always looking out for what's best in best practices, so clearly thank you very much.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Great. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it. Have a good night, and we'll see you next year.
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on. I think we have our update by our superintendent. Is this a slide thing, or you're just going to read?
Well, I'll read, and then...
And then there's a slide thing? Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to walk you through a couple of different items that I'd like to update you all on. So, the first one is our regular COVID update. So, the CDC shared the operational strategy for K-12 schools through phased mitigation on February 12th. This guide shared considerations for school districts currently not participating in in-person learning and actions to reduce the spread of the virus, included our collaborative efforts with the local health departments and the ways to promote behaviors to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Cedar Grove is currently providing in-person instruction for students and following the recommendations of the previous and current CDC guidelines. As of this morning, I have been in communication with our local health department, collaborating on the new phased mitigation outline. The Montclair Health Department has shared that the state of New Jersey Health Department is currently digesting all new information and will share new steps, if and when warranted, to local departments to disseminate to local education agencies. The EDAC update. So, today, the EDAC met and reported from individual subcommittees. The council also discussed recent events taking place at the high school and a new partnership with King University. Commemorative months were discussed, and ways of proceeding into the 2021-22 school year was also evaluated. And I will share that, I remember, at one of our, our previous meeting, a comment was made about placing on our website the possibility of what we're doing on the EDAC, and that is definitely something that we are moving forward with. And today, we were able to finalize what our mission and vision was for the district, and therefore, the next steps would be to apply that and place it onto the website. So, I remember you actually had that comment, and so, we're in definitely the process, and that's a bit of an update for, for you and everybody else interested. State testing. So, Governor Murphy and Commissioner McMillan applied to this federal government to waive standardized testing for the current school year as districts across the state continue to cope with the constraints of coronavirus pandemic. Governor Murphy announced this to the public on February 19th. We await the decision from the federal government, and we'll share with the public once an announcement is made. Women's history, and this is also something that came from our EDAC and our Department of Curriculum. March is National Women's History Month. The Department of Curriculum and Instruction, in conjunction with the District Equity and Diversity Advisory Council, has put together a document that includes information and resources for staff to use to incorporate the accomplishments and contributions of women to American culture and society within all aspects of this subject's taught. We, the Diversity Council on Global Education and Citizenship. Cedar Grove is collaborating with King University and joining the Diversity Council on Global Education and Citizenship. Benefits of joining the council include increasing academic rigor by training teachers to think critically about the complex, about complex topics, strengthening curriculum, instruction, and programming related to HIV laws, Holocaust, LGBTQ+ and disability topics, accessibility of repository of classroom resources, including book sets, videos, and unit plans, and access to King University's Holocaust Resource Center, Human Rights Institute, and College of Education. All teaching staff will also have the ability to take two tuition-free graduate courses, teaching the Holocaust and teaching prejudice reduction, and all teaching staff will also have the ability to take two tuition-free advanced graduate courses, teaching the Holocaust and teaching prejudice reduction. So educators that complete all four classes will earn a post-baccalaureate certificate in teaching the Holocaust and prejudice and reduction. And I should also announce that later on tonight, we look to approve an opportunity for our students at the high school with a Holocaust and genocide course. It will be a course that will provide students college credit, as well as providing them some very interesting outlets for study, and it's a dual enrollment program through King University. Some school updates. North End and South End, in the Department from Guidance, the character theme of the month was goal setting. All students had the opportunity to share their goals with their class, and kindergarten students learned how to care and help a person out when needed. The first graders have begun the introduction of anger management. They are learning coping skills to calm down when they start to feel angry. Second graders learned different techniques on how to join a group that had already started, and in third grade, the students learned the importance of resisting the impulse to lie and steal. The fourth graders have been focusing on the three types of bullying: cyber, physical, and verbal, and they have been learning how to be an upstander to help when someone is in need. At Memorial Middle School, we highlight the sixth grade. In Language Arts, students have just finished reading Lewis Utenmeyer's historical fiction story, The Dog of Pompeii, which takes place during the eruption of Mount Vesuvius in AD 79. Additionally, they read and discussed two informational texts that correlate to the story in Search of Pompeii in Italians Trying to Prevent a Modern Pompeii. A writing assignment was then completed, where students analyzed common ideas and themes across multiple texts. At Cedar Grove High School, the Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey and the New Jersey Governor's Theater Competition Award winners, very proud of, of these students, first place solo pantomime went to Peter Ulrich. First place improvisational pairs went to Gianna Albanese and Patrick Downey. First place musical ensemble for the CGHS Performing Arts Workshop class went to Gianna Albanese, Lawrence Chin, Patrick Downey, Julia Chablonsky, Danielle Stagliano, Alyssa Tanti, and Michaela Velasquez. And third place musical pairs went to Daniel Stagliano and Alyssa Tanti. And I have to tell you, that is outstanding. We're very, very proud of our students for that accomplishment. I do, I would like to draw your attention to, well, I'm actually going to walk down. We're going to take a look at just some of the updates and advancements on the website. So, what I'd like to do is, this is a phased process with what we're going to be presenting over the next several months, and ultimately, the goal of presenting a brand-new, fresh, modern, sleek look will, will come to your attention by September. But we want to just start to focus on a couple of different ideas that have been put into place. So, the, the website looks pretty similar to what you've, what you've seen for quite some time. What we've done is, oops, let's see if I can do this here. Okay. What we've done is, we, you know, we replaced some of the, some of the pictures that were from probably two years ago, and replaced them with school pictures. So, ultimately, what we're looking at doing is, there will be a, for visitors from outside of Cedar Grove, a wonderful promotional video of what Cedar Grove Public Schools really is and what we, what you can accomplish when you come to Cedar Grove, or you want to move into town, or you're considering actually coming to the Cedar Grove Public Schools. I want us to pay attention to this area up here. I'm going to walk you through some new evolving advancements. We're going to click onto the Parent Panther Guide. And if you notice in the past, there were parent resources. Those resources were very hard to navigate through. You didn't know where to go, what you were looking for, how to find some of those things. So, Chris, Chris Kenny, our Director of Special Education, actually came up with this idea and started to work, work on this, and what I would like to, oh, man, here we go. What I'd like to show and work through on this with you, I'm just going to kind of work you through these tabs. These are just buttons, and if you'll notice, it breaks it down to, if you're looking for something on harassment, intimidation, bullying, you know where to look for it right now. You know where to find Cedar Grove curriculum if you're looking in that, in that aspect. Friday folders, special services. Again, looking for parent resources on student emotional needs. These are all, some of these are, are familiar to you, and some of them are brand-new, but they're one, we try, what we're trying to do is make it one-stop shopping for you to make your visit to the website accessible and clean and clear. One of the other things I'd like to share is, if you go down, again, you'll see things like the Cedar Grove Recreation Department and FERPA Guidance for Parents, based on your rights, as well as some of our community resources. And again, this is the site, which I do want to bring, you know, I want to share with everybody, is our Return to Schools website, and that's where you would get your constant information on COVID activity, on weekly reports on what's, what's happening in, in the district. So, that's your, that's your spot for COVID-related items. Let's go back, and then we'll look at our, our schools. So, this section, oops, if you click on a school, we'll go on the high school. Sorry, everybody. You notice there's a little, little bit of a different look. So, last board meeting, I talked about how the principals and various other staff members helped to create a page that was a little bit more user-friendly when you go, whatever school that your child may be at. And so, one of, we're going to go through all these tonight, but one of the things is, we look at Cedar Grove High School, and, and what you can see here is, you'll see their mission and their vision. One of the things that we've done is, on all of our pages, again, you have some interesting buttons, such as the nurses' page, the Office of School Counseling, our... buttons, such as the Nurses page, the Office of School Counseling, our wonderful Paul Newsletter, which is on all of our sites, but you also have some, you have some dropdowns, I'm sorry. You have some dropdowns. So when you see things like this, this will look familiar to you, because it's the same setup that we use as for the district update. The whole purpose of this is to have continuity and a look that is familiar from page to page, as well as, if you look at the very bottom of all the pages, you'll notice now where you're able to, if you're from out of town, and you want to know where we are, who to contact, you see a map on all of these areas. So these are things that weren't there before, and these are questions that we would get at the office and say, well, where are you? In fact, in one instance was, somebody was, I believe, I don't know who, somebody, I don't know what school it was at, or it was, maybe it was the office, but somebody thought it was at a different school, or North, I think it was North End School. They were down the shore, and they really were supposed to be here in Cedar Grove. So we want to provide families, people, partners of ours, where you're going and how you can get there, so we can not have, not look foolish in the public's eyes. If we look at our, and I encourage you to go through all this, it gives you the schedule, the clubs and activities, the administration, and just to give you a little idea, you know who you're going to talk to when you come into the high school. I encourage you to look at all of this, because it is, each of these sites are loaded with Again, you can look at other schools, I could, you know, Memorial Middle School, same concept, a little bit of a different, you know, branding on that page. Again, Mr. Decore puts his message on the front page, but everything is pretty much the same as we move around. And again, those buttons are there for what is important for that particular school. And our elementary schools are very, very similar. If we look at, if we look at North End, same style, needed resources, Principal's Corner. So as you can tell, there is, it's easy. If you want to go on the parent portal, if you want to go on to the FSA, whatever it was, it's there for you, and you don't have to go searching for it and finding where it is. So this is the first portion of what we are looking at for our new updates. Again, as we move in, I will consistently keep you updated as to what and how this is looking. One of the other things I do want to share with you as well is our social media. So each of our individual schools have a Twitter page, or they'll have maybe an Instagram or Facebook. One of the things that we're looking at doing is creating continuity through that, so those handles that you will look at or that you've been used to will ultimately change to reflect the continuity of Cedar Grove. So whether it be CG Schools North End, CG Schools South End, CG Schools Superintendent, whatever it may be, it's not so discombobulated where you wouldn't necessarily know. And again, we're looking at doing this for our partners, where there's continuity there, and it's kind of a given. Again, the design from page to page will look very similar, because we want people to understand that if you go to one page, you can expect something very similar at the next page, so you're not searching in a haystack looking for that needle. So it's, again, like I said, I wanted just to share some of the things that the principals are doing, and I give them a lot of credit, because for a lot of our staff, this is brand-new. They've never had training in this, and they're exploring this themselves, so I commend them on this. And this is all live right now, so if you go to your school's webpage, you will get the opportunity to actually go in and explore those webpages. I encourage you to do that. So that is our first portion of that. And that's it.
Well, thank you for that update. We recognize as a board that our website was lacking now for a little while, and so we asked Mr. Groso to take on the challenge, and he gracefully accepted, because why wouldn't you want to fix that? So we appreciate that, and we look forward to the end result. So thank you. All right, moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under Minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B5?
So moved.
Second. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of February 9th, 2021. B2, I'm going to renumber that, because it went from B1 to B3. So, Mr. DeVita, trying to be funny, B2, B3. Oh, and they all have to be numbered, don't they? Oh, fantastic. Okay, well, new B2 is a motion to approve the Treasures Report for the month of January 2021. New B3 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary Report for the month of January 2021. And new B4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's Certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation and violation of the Code. Any discussion? No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Bills, can I have a motion for new B5?
So moved.
Second. New B5 is a motion to pay the list of bills that were in our packet for the period covered on January 20th to February 23rd. Any discussion?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Business, can I have a motion for new B6 through new B8? Seven, you mean?
If he comes to new six, two numbers.
Oh.
Messed up.
Gotcha. The numbering continued. So moved.
Second.
New B6 is a motion to rescind Mr. Mario Gata on the following reorganization appointments and designations from the January 6, 2021, board meeting. New B7 is a motion to approve John Bannon on the following appointments and designations through the next board reorganization meeting. And new B8 is a motion to accept the Cedar Grove Board of Education Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Any discussion?
No.
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 Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S7?
So moved. Second.
S1 is a motion to approve John Bannon, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, at the rate listed effective February 24th to June 30th, 2021. S2 is a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Tower for the purpose of retirement as elementary teacher after 31 years in the district. Her last working day will be June 30th. S3 is a motion to approve Jennifer Constantini, MMS Special Education Teacher, at the rate listed. S4 is a motion to approve the resignation of Colleen Cesari, MMS Math Teacher. S5 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring, I'm sorry, state emergent hiring start date procedures. And S6 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. And S7 is a motion to approve the following spring coaches for the 2021 school year based upon the 2019-20 bargaining contract. Whereas the Cedar Grove School District seeks to appoint stipend positions for the 2021 school year, and whereas the Cedar Grove School District will pay the full amount associated with the stipend of a particular co-curricular activity in the event that the co-curricular activity is conducted in full, and whereas the Cedar Grove School District will not pay the amount of the stipend or pay a prorated amount of the stipend associated with the co-curricular activity in the event that all or portion of the co-curricular activity is not conducted due to a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency, or directive by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure, or a directive from the appropriate representative of the New Jersey Department of Education, or a directive from the governor or designate, or the New Jersey legislator or designate, or should the Cedar Grove School District adopt a permissible virtual or remote learning platform where the co-curricular activity cannot be performed, or that the school year itself might be modified. And whereas in the event that the co-curricular activity is either canceled, or reduced, or modified, the stipend will not be paid or will be prorated to commensurate with the percentage of the co-curricular activity that is actually conducted. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Cedar Grove School District approves the following appointments contingent on the co-curricular activity running and becoming operational, and that the stipend not be paid if the co-curricular activity is canceled or prorated, should the activity not be completed because of a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency, or a directive by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure, or a directive from the appropriate representative of the New Jersey Department of Education, or a directive from the governor or designate, or the New Jersey legislator or designate. Any discussion?
Can I just give a shout-out?
Absolutely.
Is that the time? Is that what I should?
Now is the time when you shout out. That's exactly now.
I just want to say, congratulations to Lisa Tower on her.
Yeah, yes.
Retirement. I mean, 31 years in the district's a long time.
It's a long time.
And she's affected a lot of children's lives. I have two kids that went through South End, and my kids didn't have her, but I mean, very caring person, loves her children in the school, and I just want to say congratulations.
I wanted to second that, because, you know, just an amazing individual, seriously. And also, I wanted to congratulate our new Buildings and Grounds person, Mr. Bannon.
Who's in the background there?
Yes, because I have to tell you, it's been a fantastic partnership over the past couple of years, and I cannot think of anyone who is more qualified for the position, and you have brought such dignity and such clarity to our school district as it applies to what people see. When anyone comes into this buildings, or any of our buildings, they marvel at, you know, the state that they're in now, and I tip my hat to you, and thank you very much, sir.
And congratulations.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Policies, and I'm just going to pause for just a second, for S9, are you reading things, Mr. Groso? You're reading a lot, right? Yes. S9. Oh, somebody's reading them.
Yeah, Mike's going to read them, yeah.
Okay, so before we go into any of this, Mr. DeVita is going to read us, the first reading of the following policies.
Thank you. I'm just going to summarize the policies in our first reading tonight. Policy 145 is for board member resignation and removal. This policy addresses when a board member must resign, must be removed, or may be removed from the board in accordance with New Jersey statute. This policy is mandated. Regulation 1642 is for the Earn Sick Leave Law. This regulation has been updated to address the New Jersey statutes revised and new language expanding the use of accrued sick leave for additional reasons. The regulation is mandated. Policy 1643 for family leave, this is a new policy, and it takes the place of policies 3431.1, 4431.1, 3431.3, and 4431.3, which have all been abolished and are now under this one new policy. And this new policy is used to understand and implement the provisions of the federal and state family leave laws. The use of family leave has been expanded, the definition of a family member has been expanded, the definition of family leave has a new qualifying reason for state of emergency declared in response to a communicable disease, and rules regarding an employee use of intermittent leave. Also, the permissive language to decisive languages such as shall, must, or require have been revised, and this is a mandated policy. Policy 1648, the remote learning options for families. This policy is revised to give the option to combine cohorts. And policy and regulation 5330.01 is for the administration of medical cannabis. This policy and regulation have been revised to address the updated terminology and new definitions to statutes, including changing the word marijuana to cannabis. This policy is mandated. Policy 7425 is for lead testing of water in schools. And according to the change in code, all school districts are required to test drinking water outlets every third year, beginning with the 2021-22 school year. Districts are also required to review the final hour results within 72 hours upon receipt, and this policy and regulation are both mandated. Policy and regulation 7430 has been abolished and is addressed in other policies. Policy 2415 is for the Every Student Succeeds Act, also the ESSA it's called. This policy has been updated to list the general provisions of the ESSA. The academic standards, academic assessments, and accountability section have all been updated. This policy is mandated for districts that receive federal funds. Policy 2415.01 has been abolished and is now part of policy 2415. Policy 2415.02 is for Title I fiscal responsibilities. This policy has been revised to provide an additional section, supplement, not supplant, and it is mandated for districts that receive Title I funds. And policy 2415.03 has been abolished, as it is no longer required under the ESSA. Policy 2415.05 is for student surveys, analysis, and/or evaluations. This policy addresses the issue of a district obtaining written consent from parents for their trial to participate in a survey, analysis, or evaluation funded in whole or in part by the United States Department of Education. This policy is mandated. Policy and regulation 2415.20, this is the Every Student Succeeds Act complaints. These are revised to update the provisions of the complaint procedure for resolving complaints that are filed to be in compliance with the ESSA. The policy and regulation are both mandated. And policy 4125, the employment of support staff members, policy 6360, political contributions, and policy 8330 for student records, these are all being revised, just to change the terminology from no trial left behind to ESSA. And lastly, policy 9713, this is the recruitment by special interest groups. This revision includes some changes from the ESSA to include opting out of information being disclosed with parent consent. Also, a recruiter must request permission to recruit on school premises at least 45 working days prior to the visit, and this policy is mandated.
Thank you. All right, so under Policies, can I have a motion for S8 through S9?
So moved.
S8 is a motion to suspend Bylaw 131 that requires two readings to adopt a bylaw or policy, and adopt the below-numbered policy with one reading to being in compliance with the remote learning options that are being offered at Cedar Grove High School. And S9 is a motion to approve the first reading of the policies that Mr. DeVita just read. Any discussion? No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Curriculum, can I have a motion for S10?
So moved.
Second. S10 is a motion to approve the following employees to write curriculum. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Contracts, before I ask for a motion for S11, I just want to be clear that Mr. Shoner and I cannot vote on S11, not because we don't want to, but because we're prohibited from doing so, because we have spouses that are in the NJEA. So when you see us abstaining, that is why, not because we're taking a stand against anything. We are completely happy that we've come to an agreement, and we're voting on it this evening. So, under Contracts, can I have a motion for S11 and S12?
So moved.
Second.
S11 is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreements between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and the Cedar Grove Education Association's teacher unit, secretarial unit, paraprofessional unit, and custodian unit for the 2020, 21, 21, 22, and 22, 23 years. S12 is a motion for approval of the King University Dual Enrollment Holocaust and Genocide Studies Program that Mr. Groso spoke about before. Any discussion?
No.
No.
I just want to thank everybody who made S11 possible. I know it went on for a little bit. I know COVID didn't help, not being, I think, you know, being able to meet in front of each other didn't help either, but I think in the end, everybody can walk away being, I think, mostly happy. You can't all be happy when you walk away from a negotiation, but I'm glad this is all done, and thank you to everybody who put in many hours making this happen on both sides. I appreciate it, so thank you. And this being ratified and being done is in the best interest of everybody in the district, so thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
I'm abstaining.
You can vote on S12.
Oh, yeah, yes to S12.
Mrs. Dai.
I abstain on S11, and I vote yes on S12. I abstain on S11, and I vote yes on S12. That's how you do it, Mr. Shoner. Okay. All right, one second, get the next piece of paper out. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In this section, we allow public comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 40 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please remember to state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation, if applicable, each and every time you address the board. So now, the meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda, and we had a sign-up sheet for the second hearing of citizens and any school-related matters. And the first person on the list is Mr. Mark Loftus.
Hi, my name is Mark Loftus. I live in Cedar Grove. I have four students in the school district, two in the middle school, and two at South End. This question is under the umbrella of getting kids back into school in person as much as possible. It was sparked by the recent discussion of combining cohorts at the middle school. So my understanding is that the request was put out, who was interested in returning to in-person class, and Mr. Decort's email said that it was overwhelming. I guess my question is, against what criteria? Like, what are the standards? And it seems to be that we have different, so, the high school is able to combine cohorts. There's no questioning of the elementary school, whether that's even an option. So, I guess just to level set, what are the benchmarks that we're working towards in order to get kids back into school more? Because I can't reconcile in my head that there's this overwhelming demand, but then, in the cohort A that my kids are in, there's one or two kids in a classroom, and I had my daughter canvass the class today, and in all of her periods, the maximum was three, the minimum was one, and the mode was about two. So, I'm just having a hard time reconciling how there's such a disparity between the demand to get kids back into the classroom and the fact that we're in the situation where there's so few people in instruction in the classroom.
So, thank you, sir, for asking that question, and I'd be more than happy to kind of walk you through that. Last meeting, I spent quite some time going through the logistics of the calendar and going through what the facts are. Now, I can understand that there can be disagreements with that, but I'll just walk you through the middle school more specifically. So, it was very exciting for us here in Cedar Grove to be able to offer that to the high school students. And the rationale behind that was, was because approximately, well, not approximately, actually 78% of students at the high school have opted to be virtual, therefore leaving approximately around 20% of the students at the high school who were actually attending in person. So, when we looked at those numbers, what we wanted to find out is, is that those students who were going regularly through their A and their B cohorts, would they possibly be interested in doing that for every week, and creating somewhat of a sub-cohort? But when we put that out there, we had to also include families that have the, that may want to take advantage of that, who have been virtual. And that is where 1648.02 comes into play, where you can maneuver in and out of virtual and hybrid two cycles. Well, when we did that at the high school, there was a good response. In fact, we actually did bring some of the people that were, that originally wanted to be all virtual, out of virtual, into hybrid. So, with that, the middle school wanted to look at that as well. And our numbers were approximately 70%, a little bit higher than 70% that were all virtual. Little bit of a different population, a little bit of a different situation based on the scheduling procedures. Mr. Decort and his team looked into this, put out the same information that was put out from the high school, looking into seeing how that would work. There was an overwhelming response, where people did want to come back to the building, and they did want to be in-person instruction. The issue that was at hand, which is very different than a high school individual classes, when you're looking at a sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, English Language Arts class, you're looking not at an honors, an AP, or a college prep, or a general academic course, you're looking at an overall course. So when Mr. Decort was able to go and itemize that, and look at where it would work, he and I was having multiple conversations, and in fact, he was very, very excited at one point where it looked like it was going to work. But, where the trouble spot became, wasn't period one, and it wasn't a period two, is when you started to get into the middle of the day, in the middle-of-day courses, and you start to lose rooms. Yeah, sure, you could probably have spread people out into a gym, but quite frankly, that we would have to follow the rules from the CDC and our local health department, and that wasn't providing us much space. Sure, you could have combined classes together where you would have made larger cohorts of kids, or there is possibilities where teachers would have to travel, and they would not have the materials, the document cameras, the technology that they needed to support the class. So therefore, the decision was made was that it wasn't prudent for the middle school at this particular moment in time to work under the standards that we are currently working under from the CDC and our local Montclair Health Department, to provide a proper instructional model for our students. What we're doing with the AB cohorts, although there are those people out there that may not necessarily agree with that cohort, or that style of delivering instruction, what we would have done at the middle school level wouldn't have been conducive to that, and it definitely would have been, definitely would not have been conducive to the fact of, again, following those standards and following what the teachers need to do to instruct their students.
Okay, thank you for the response. I think that gives me a little bit more comfort that the thought exercise was there, and it wasn't just a measurement against a metric that maybe we lost by one, maybe we lost by 50, I have no idea.
Right.
But that gives me a little bit more comfort. I guess, just one follow-up question. When we talk about CDC guidelines and Montclair Health Department, how much discretion does the district have in interpreting the regulations?
It's a really great-
Just because, you know, CDC is nationwide, and there's districts all over the country that are five days a week, all day long, so-
You're absolutely right. I'm glad you brought that up, because I did want to bring to the attention, because I did speak about the operational strategy for K to 12 schools with their, through their phase mitigation, when that came out on February 12th. You're absolutely right. There, you see districts throughout this state, even throughout our own county, that are doing very, very different, using very, very different methods of bringing children back into the classroom. And part of that, I can walk you through the rationale, the reasons why some of the districts are doing what they're doing. So in a much smaller district, that may have around 300 to 400 students in a district, they might be able to do that based on their employees, the amount of employees they have, the space they have, the rooms they have, and the measurement based on that six-foot standard. You may have districts that are comparable to our size, that aren't even in, that haven't even been back to school yet. Then you have some larger districts that are teetering on doing a mix of what we're doing, not going back at all, or finding ways of doing that. And I know that recently, we were looking at Mount Olive is, has today announced that they are combining their A and their B cohorts. Now, I don't necessarily know how they're doing that, I don't necessarily know their logistics, but I can assume that if, for us here in this district, one of the steps that we were looking at moving forward was to combine those cohorts into those sub-cohorts. The one thing that I do want to share is that, yes, the CDC is an overall standard for what local and state health departments are guided by. The one thing that is very, very frustrating for all school districts is that local health departments around the country are interpreting those standards in very different ways. So all I can share is, and what we're doing here in Cedar Grove, is that we, just this morning, I was able to have a conference call with the Montclair Health Department. And based on the new, well, I don't even know if they're new standards, there's a lot of repetition in there. And to be quite honest with you, there's a lot of vagueness, that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information in there, and I've actually put it on our district update, where you click on that top banner, you can kind of read through it yourself. There's a lot of stuff and a lot of links that will bring you to a lot of different things. But, what, the information that was presented to us from our local health agency was that the State Department, the New Jersey State Department of Health is currently digesting what the CDC has put forth for local education agencies, and they will then give us what the next steps are. We have, here in Cedar Grove, and I would speak for probably most other school districts, there is no benefit for us to keep students out of the building. That is not advantageous for students, nor is it for the teachers. But, it is extremely important that we follow what those guidelines are for the safety of our staff and for our students. And until we get some sort of guidance as to where our local health department, our state health department wants to bring us, we will steer, we will continue the course, but we are certainly open to moving forward in various ways based on new standards.
Okay. Thanks for taking my question.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Patricia Montana.
Hi, good evening, Patricia Montana, 5 Emory Court in Cedar Grove. So, in that vein of wanting more in-person learning, my first question is, when will the district allow in-person learning to occur on Fridays, even if only for a half a day? I don't think we need to hear another explanation of the cleaning that occurs on Fridays. I don't doubt the veracity of it, but there is a lot of skepticism out there about whether that time spent on cleaning is necessary or even valuable as measured against the loss of in-person learning. So when reviewing the CDC new guidelines and New Jersey's restart and recovery plan, it's clear that neither require the intensity of cleaning that we're doing on Fridays. For example, there's nothing in those plans recommending the cleaning of air filtration systems. In fact, disinfecting of high-touch surfaces is the most prominent recommendation, and one that can easily be accomplished after school or in a single afternoon. The CDC, plus a handful of recent studies, suggests that the virus might not even transmit very much or at all on surfaces, and that the simple passage of time, a few hours to a day, can work to eliminate whatever risk might exist. This comes from the CDC new guidelines. Therefore, it's very possible that a shortened cleaning period paired with the weekend break would be sufficient to eliminate the spread, if it happens at all, from on-surface touches. So my question again is, when will the district allow in-person learning to occur on Fridays, even if only for a half-day?
Would you like me to respond to that now, or you have another question?
I'll have you respond, and then I'll ask a follow-up.
So, Ms. Montana, we've had multiple conversations about this, and I know that you shared that you do not want me to repeat some of the cleaning procedures, but I, it is extremely important, because that validates the rationale and the reasoning why we have Fridays in that manner. It is not possible to appropriately clean the build, each individual classroom in the building at large, in the appropriate way that needs to be done as you go from one cohort to the next. And I will give you that example, and I have here in front of me the CDC's guidelines in their new update on the 12th as to maintaining healthy environments, and talking specifically about cleaning and disinfection, as well as shared objects. You're correct, there, stated inside of this document, it talks about a elementary level, and then it talks about a secondary level. One of the things, one of the things that I'd like to share is, we have had to temporarily place several of our buildings into an all-virtual model due to the increased activity of people who are children and adults who are positive. It would be lackadaisical, and it would be improper for us to open a building to a new cohort of students if, from week to week, if we did not properly clean the building the way that we've been doing that. And I shared that in the last board meeting, I've actually shared that in conversations. And so the answer to your question is, when would we consider moving forward and utilizing Fridays? That time will come when we have gotten information from our local health department, our state health department, as well as CDC guidelines sharing with us what next steps would be. But until then, we will continue to provide a safe environment for our students and our staff.
And I would just ask, as it applies to the high school, since you're no longer A and B cohorts, it's the same group of students moving from one week to another, perhaps you could disaggregate your approach and allow in-person learning on Friday mornings at the high school. My second question, Mr. Groso had mentioned to me privately and publicly at the last meeting that teachers getting vaccinations is a quote-unquote "game changer." Can the district explain what is meant by that? Does that mean that we will return in-person in full capacity, full-time? And related to that, can the district share with the public the percentage of teachers who have been vaccinated to date?
Number one, I cannot share with you the number of teachers that have been vaccinated to date. I will share with you that we are in cooperation with Vanguard Medical, providing an employee vaccination program. The game changer is that it's not just a game changer for Cedar Grove Public Schools, it's a game changer for the United States, it's a game changer for the global world. We have been living inside of a global pandemic. Inside that pandemic, there have been over 500,000 deaths, as well as millions of people that have been infected and lost within families, and other complications that have arose from that virus itself. So the game changer that I speak about is, it is not only for the Cedar Grove Public Schools, but is for the world at large. Our world has been disrupted. Families have lost jobs. Families have lost family members, and children, spouses, sisters, brothers. So the game changer with the vaccination is absolutely that it will provide us a light at the end of the tunnel. How that will impact us here in Cedar Grove? It is a pathway to getting back to a schedule that we once knew prior to March of 2020.
Okay, thank you. My third question, when will the district research and plan to extend the in-person day at schools, even if cohorts remain intact? So, in answering the question, I don't want the concern over younger children, pre-K to first, second graders, to be the objection. You can answer with respect to middle school and high school separately. As we discussed last meeting, older children, third grade and up, do not need assistance eating, and CDC's new guidelines, as well as the New Jersey restart and recovery plan, do not prohibit eating in schools.
Ms. Montana, you need to stop now, you're at your three-minute allotment. It's three minutes per person. If, after everybody else goes, and you want to come back up and speak for another three minutes, you're welcome to.
Sure, I would like to do that.
That's fine.
So, I'd be more than happy to answer that, you know, based on your question. We are heavily looking at how we can move forward in anticipating multiple models of what and how we can get more time and children back into the classroom. But that is going to be based on the standards, as I've shared in the very beginning of our conversation. It will be based on standards, and the one key to all of this is, what will the New Jersey State Department of Health come out with as to help guide us as an educational agency, as to help bring back phased schedules, as well as bringing children and staff back in a way that is safe? So, to answer your question, when will we be doing this, and how will we be doing this, it's all going to be based upon what the outcome will be- upon what the outcome will be from our local health department, as well as the state health department. And I would anticipate that there would be some sort of guidance from the state of New Jersey, as we've learned that they have offered the, I believe it's called the Road Forward. We still, I think all local school districts, education agencies are waiting to see what that is. So once we have acquired that information, I'll be better able to answer that question for you.
Okay. Thank you. And I would like to speak again, if there's time.
If there's time. The next person on the list is Mr. Chris Cannella.
Good evening, folks. My name is Chris Cannella. I'm the president of the Cedar Grove Education Association. I'm a social studies teacher at the high school. First, I want to thank the board for ratifying the contract tonight. We started the process, we started that journey over a year ago. And it's one of the toughest things we have to do between the association and the board. It's not easy. I don't have, I don't take pleasure in negotiating. I think it's part of the, one of part of the jobs that I really dislike. We, in the end, we're able to have great conversations. I met, in the last week, Mr. Grosso and I spoke over the phone and were able to get this done because it's what's in the best interest of everybody, considering everything that's going on. So again, thank you. Thank you to the board for ratifying it. Thank you to the two members that sat on the committee, Mr. DeVito, Mr. Grosso, for getting it done on a tight deadline, so we could present it last week. So, you know, some positive news. When Mr. Grosso was hired last year, he reached out to me and said, hey, let's meet up. So the two of us, we met on, at a cafe outside, six feet apart, you know, we weren't wearing masks, but we were outside. And we had about a three-hour conversation. And the conversation, at the end of the conversation, Mr. Grosso said, he's like, Chris, what are, what's the CGA's goals? What are your three goal, what's your three top priorities? And, you know, he wasn't even in office yet. It was about a week or so before his first day. And I said, well, clearly, number one is to, you know, let's get back into schools and let's do it safely. And obviously, that road was not an easy road. There was some disagreements over things. It took a lot of work to get us to where we are today. Mr. Grosso and a bunch of us, I think Mr. Bannon was with us, we toured the schools for five hours in August. I brought in some people to help me, because this is not what I'm trained in doing, is the safety of schools. I'm trained in teaching social studies. So we worked that out. And the other goal was to achieve what we achieved tonight, was to get a new contract. My third goal, I said, was, you know, to address some of the cultural issues in this town, in this school system, the diversity issues. And, you know, Ms. Dai and I have had some very poignant conversations over the summer about this issue, and she knows how I feel about it. And I appreciate what this board has done in such a little time, and this administration, to move us forward. And, you know, we had some incidences at the high school, and, you know, in my 22 years, I've never seen it addressed that way. And I really appreciate the administration for addressing it that way, those incidences. And I appreciate the things that I'm seeing on that front personally, as somebody who does a lot of work for LGBTQ advocacy across the state and across the country in education, and as a teacher, and as somebody who's a member of the LGBT community, I really appreciate that. As far as the school, the schools opening and moving forward, what I ask for the parents and what the teachers ask is, we still need a little bit of patience here. Okay? We are just about getting these vaccines. Mr. Grosso worked very hard to make an agreement with Vanguard. You know, it's sometimes it's a matter of numbers. Okay? You know, my job is to represent the staff and the teachers. And I take that job very seriously, but that's not the only thing about my job. The other part about my job is to make sure that kids get a proper education and that they are also safe. The work I do, the work that my members do, is about the students. And we can't do our jobs if we don't feel safe. Okay? And I will tell you right now, you know, I deal, I deal two, once or twice, three times a week, with members who are calling me crying because they fear, but they're still coming into these buildings. They're still trying to do their best. And I tell them, look, the light's at the end of the tunnel. The light's at the end of the tunnel. I, I'll tell you, I got my first vaccine. Who asked? Okay? I'm waiting for my second. We all can't, we all cannot wait for life to return back to normal. Okay? Nobody wants this. My life was, is spent, my, in this school, hours, you know, all the plays I directed and all the things we coached and spending time with the kids, that's all been taken away from all of us. And we want that back. Okay? But, you know, there are numbers. Six feet, that's important. There's only so much we could fit in these buildings. Okay? And we still have to, you know, understand that you still have to clean these places, you still have to ventilate these places, and it takes a lot. I want to get back. We all want to get back. We'll get there. But let's get there, you know, doing what is right. And I understand that this, that there are students falling behind. Trust me, I see it every day. My members see it every day. Okay? Thank you. And I got to go for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cannella. All right. There's time remaining, so, and there's nobody else on the list, so Ms. Montana, if you wanted to come back up?
Thank you. And I'll, and I'll say what I said last meeting as well, that I have, that none of these questions are new to Mr. Grosso. And I had called his office to schedule a meeting, and no meeting was ever scheduled, which has left me the resort of speaking publicly at the board meeting. So my last question was one that I had raised last week as well about Friday afternoons. When will the district return Friday afternoon learning to students, virtually or otherwise? It's clear that while that time might be used by staff and teachers to complete professional development, that was not communicated to the community, nor part of the plan that was distributed to parents. Indeed, on the frequently asked questions page on the website, where the Cedar Grove Return to School Plan is, the question is still posted, will remote Fridays utilize a full-day schedule? And the answer is yes. And so my question is, when will Friday afternoons be returned to students, virtually or otherwise? It's hard to justify the insistence of the need to continue to block out Friday afternoons for this professional development, given the tremendous loss of learning suffered by our students.
Ms. Montana, my answer to that is, when the time is appropriate and right, based on the standards that I've shared at multiple times, including our multiple conversations on the phone. I will share that, again, the cleaning procedures that take place on those Fridays is impossible to do on an afternoon or a night. And I'll give the example of what happens with the unit ventilators in each of our buildings. Each of our custodial, our custodial staff goes in, they disassemble the Univent, they look through it, they change the filter out if it needs to be changed out. These are things that would be absolutely impossible to do on a daily basis. And that's why we have dedicated Fridays to that, as well as the neutral disinfectant that I, you know, that I've spoke, I've spoke about in the past. It is extremely important for our staff to be properly trained in the progression of what we are doing. I shared at the last board meeting that if we were to consciously move forward in a way that we are moving now, that would have taken years to plan. It would have taken time to pilot, as well as immense training would have had to be put into place. It is not as easy as it may seem, or as easy as they make it look, to be quite honest with you. Because I will share this, and I will definitely acknowledge the staff in the sense that their ability to adapt to a culture of using technology and teaching in a way where other districts aren't doing this synchronously, where they're sitting with a computer in front of them, teaching a group of children at home, as well as teaching a group of kids in their class, is, that's never been done before. That has never been done before. Nor has it ever been done where we've had to line up and take temperatures. Nor has it ever been done where we have had to put into procedures of how do we clean the appropriate way, outside of what our normal cleaning capacity is. So there are multiple things that have gone into place, and those Fridays are very, very valuable in that sense. And I will share with you, again, if the CDC and the Montclair Health Department and the State Department of Health come up, come back and say, these are the things that you can do to remediate a situation, there is no reason why we wouldn't look at a Friday to have that conversation and collaboration. But as of right now, we will continue to steer the course on making sure that the buildings are safe, they're clean, and they're healthy for the next cohort of kids to move into. And there are no other ways right now, under the conditions that we are currently working under, to do that than this way.
And that applies to virtual learning on Friday afternoons as well? Because I was asking when-
Well, Ms. Montana, I want to share with you, I don't know how you would do virtual learning, synchronous virtual learning, if the staff is in the middle of doing professional development on a Friday afternoon.
Well, that's my question. If, when will the district reconsider its decision of allotting professional development on Friday afternoons, and then allow virtual learning to occur in its place?
Once we are given guidance as to what our next steps are in the state of New Jersey, then we will have that conversation as to what the next steps will be and how we'll proceed.
Okay. And I agree with you, and I do, and I do want to underscore my appreciation for the, for the talents of teachers and staff as well. And in fact, they are so good, right, that, that's why I want more. That's why I want more for my children. And they are so good in the classroom, and they have been terrific virtually. And I want more. I want more for them. Okay? Thank you for answering my questions this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannella, did you want to speak again?
One of the things, almost a year ago, and I remember when all the talks started happening, and me and Mr. Fatheman were on the phone, and we're like, wow, this could be crazy. What are we going to do? How is this going to happen? This has been the hardest professional year I've had, and I keep hearing that from my teacher, from my staff. Okay? Not just from the teachers, but, you know, all of the people I represent. Because we have to do something in a way we've never done it before. Okay? Education was meant to be done in person. So, you know, the things that my members are doing on a Friday are invaluable. One of the things I know personally I do at the high school is every other week I meet with the GSA. Because we can't do it, there's no time to do it during the day. And, you know, we are still running sports, so it's a little bit hard to do it after school. So, and, you know, just the way the schedule's, so. And I know so many other teachers who are using the time to adapt the lessons, because what worked a year ago does not work now. You know, I was kind of a bit old-fashioned. I like to give paper tests. It's one of the last things, I kept paper. All right? And this year, I have to spend time to convert that stuff to digital. It doesn't just happen right away. So, you know, when Mr. Grosso and I talked about the schedule, we talked about the need for prep time, for extra prep time, to convert these lessons. And not to mention, we have some teachers that have been here for a long time, and they're great teachers. Okay? And, and, you know, they have been doing things, and, you know, they adapt and they do, but it's, it's still a totally different world for them. We have teachers that have left, that have retired. Okay? Because, because they didn't want to do this. We lost some great teachers over the last few, over the last year because of the major changes that have taken place in the way we educate. And, and, you know, being, yeah, you know, I always say, teaching is a profession. We practice teaching. Right? Well, imagine a doctor being told that you cannot use a scalpel to teach, to operate, and you're going to do it a new way. It takes time. So, you know, again, I'm asking for time, and that time that the teachers have on Friday is valuable. We're instituting in the high school, we're going to start meeting for faculty meetings, because we've, that's something we've never, we've never done. So we're going to do that, that time now. So, you know, the time right now is valuable, because we're kind of flying, we're building a plane as we fly it. And, you know, if, perhaps if we, if I went to school and learned how to teach like this, I wouldn't need that time. So right now, please, that time is valuable. And, you know, we've had that conversation. And I just wanted to give you the perspective of, you know, what my members have on that. And, and I know that you're feeling overwhelmed. Again, my members are feeling overwhelmed. And I think these little things, like having a little bit of extra time to take back, you know, and we've even done some things for the teachers' professional development, for them to learn how to step away and take care of themselves, because they're all putting their whole lives into this. And we all are. So, thank you, and I just wanted to address, you know, that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Cannella. Appreciate it. Okay. I closed that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, March 2nd. Isn't that like next week? Okay. Same place, same time. And then, and then there's a little break, March 16th, same place, same time. Any other comments? No?
No.
All right. And I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Fandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is over. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.